Anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on sale of the property? We got one bid, yeah, we'll open the bid.
Yeah.
All right, I saw it as six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, if everyone please rise, gentlemen remove your hats, Doug Skaggs will please lead us in prayer.
Lord, we thank you for the day you've given to us today, we thank you for our lives and for our community, we thank you for the opportunity to meet here, receive them, and do business with this community and do the best we can to move forward. We ask you bless our representative state and our meeting in general, that you will be done, Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, at this time we'll please have roll call.
Mayor Gary Moore.
Present.
City Attorney Darren Rice.
Here.
Alderman Terry Stahl.
Here.
Alderman Allen Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Cheryl Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Eugene McGill is absent, Alderman Bruce McKibben.
Here.
Alderman Clifford Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Dewey Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cody Atterberry.
Here.
And we have a forum, before we move on, I just would like to say with Alderman Eugene is absent due to the death of his father, we would like to offer our condolences to Alderman McGill and his family. Um, we will go ahead and move on to the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, are there any corrections, additions to the minutes as they are in your packet? If none, is there a motion to approve? Alderman Skall, Alderman Marsh second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, does anyone wish to abstain? Minutes are approved, next would be the approvals of the bills that was submitted since the last council meeting, are there any questions on any of the bills? If there are none, is there a motion to approve?
I make that motion, I second it.
I have a motion by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Atterberry, to approve payment of the bills, roll call vote Weaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry, yes, Marsh.
Yes.
McGill is absent, McKibben.
Yes.
And the bills are approved, next would be the public comment section of the meeting, is there, at this time, is there anyone that would like to address the city council? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section and move into routine business, uh, the first item is an ordinance authorizing the sale of municipal owned real property. Uh, we just had a meeting with that, a public meeting, at this time, uh, we are looking to sell some property that was in the old Boyd addition that we, uh, we acquired a few months back. We had one bid, uh, that bid, um, was for ten thousand dollars, uh, and they are going to, uh, add a dance studio, they're going, they plan to install a fifty by eighty, uh, building for the use of a dance studio, uh, again, uh, we've had some discussion, uh, would you like to add anything, I know I said I'd kind of let you be, but would you like to add anything? Do you, do you know when you might start on the construction if this is approved?
As soon as we can.
Soon as we can, okay. Uh, again, this is, uh, you know, for, for the community, it's a, it's a, it would be a new business, be, you know, property taxes for the city, uh, I, I think it's a win-win situation for everybody. Um, is there any, any questions that need to be answered? If none, is there a motion to approve the purchase of the property, of the purchase, for the sale?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second it, yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, does anyone wish to abstain? And that proposal is approved, we thank you and we look forward to the, for the new building.
Thank you.
Uh, ordinance, uh, item number two is an ordinance for the annual pay raise for the part-time airport employee, city council discussed this several months ago. Uh, it has always been that we brought up, uh, the pay raise for the part-time employee after the, after the sem- uh, airport. Uh, but it was discussed that we would like to just have him mirror what the I B E W contract gets, uh, and that has been brought to us for your approval tonight. Any questions on that? Is there a motion to appro-
Is that the same as what the cemetery part-time people get, I mean, would it be?
Well, n- no.
No.
No, the, um, the cemetery right now, with the college kids, they, they are just whatever minimum wage is.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but since, you know, Ed Prince is, you know, out there full, not full-time, but he's out there year-round.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, he's been there for a few years, uh, you know, that's, that's the difference. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
I make that motion.
I'll second it, I have a motion by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Cheryl Eccleberry, to approve the ordinance for the annual pay raise for part-time airport employees. Roll call vote Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
McGill is absent, McKibben.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
And that ordinance is passed, uh, the last item on this evening's agenda is an intergovernmental agreement with the Fairfield Public School District one twelve.
Right turn only.
Right, right turn, no, I gotta check, number three is the ordinance for a right turn only sign at Southwest Third and West Delaware, Attorney Rice?
Uh, yes, I think, uh, um, the meeting before last, I believe we had a, um, Chief Coclaser describe the situation, this is over by, um, senior citizens center, that, um, it's not a road, but it's used as such, and I think it was causing some issues, and so they, it was, uh, encouraged by Chief Coclaser to put up a right turn signal only, or a right turn only sign, um, so that encourages people to turn right on the way. So, that's what I've got to find in the ordinance, so.
And again, we have a lot of people that attend, you know, the festivities for the meals at the senior citizens, and there was some concern, especially through the, uh, high school days, that, you know, some kids were going through there maybe a little faster than what they should have been, or what they would have liked to have seen. Uh, they did ask us, you know, if maybe we could install some speed bumps there, but, you know, at that point in time, I don't know that that was a good thing, because then we wouldn't be able to have any snow removal in there. Uh, Chief, do you have anything to add?
No, it's, for years, everybody's used it as a road, uh, it's actually private property, and to get to it from Thirsty, you have to go against the flow of traffic technically, on the one-way, so it should be a right turn in the, anyway. It's a pretty good job.
Any questions? And again, y- you know, this is something that's gonna take a little bit of getting used to, uh, even though the sign will say right turn only, it undoubtedly, it's gonna happen, uh, y- you know, but, you know, as people became more adjusted to, to seeing the sign, hopefully, uh, it becomes a, a right turn only. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance for the right turn sign only?
I'll make that motion, I'll second that.
So, Stahl?
Yes.
Thanks.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, anyone wish to abstain? And I did talk with Robert Camp down the street and bridge, he does have that sign in stock, so hopefully we can get that installed fairly quickly. Uh, item number four is an inter-government agreement with the Fairfield Public School District one twelve for a school resource officer. Uh, you know, we currently have a school resource officer in the high school, uh, and the school, uh, has decided that they would like to, um, have the same, uh, protection that, you know, is offered to the high school, uh, Chief Coclaser and Assistant Chief Ben Lewis have met with the school board, and the school board, the District one twelve, uh, is agreeable to a three-year contract with the city of Fairfield. Uh, in your packet, uh, exhibit A, uh, this will be a three-year contract, uh, and it's a, um, the salary of this, of the starting police officers, is that right, Chief?
It's a five-year.
Five-year contract?
No, five-year salary.
Five-year salary, okay.
Based off of that.
So, the salary is sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents, that's about twenty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents per hour. Uh, there is some pension dollars, there is some insurance, there is some additional S R O training, uh, and the total cost, uh, is estimated to be seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Uh, the District one twelve will, uh, contribute eighty percent of that, so that would be sixty thousand, four forty-one, eighty-two, or an expense, a monthly expense, uh, of five thousand, thirty-six dollars and eighty-two cents. Uh, year twenty-five and twenty-six will just increase with whatever the F O P contract increases, is that true, Chief?
Correct.
And twenty-six and twenty-seven will be the same adjustment, whatever the F O P contract happens to be. Any questions? Chief, did I miss anything?
No, uh, the high schools worked out well, they enjoy having Sergeant Sager there, and we had a pretty rough spring at the grade school for past couple of years, so they, they approached us.
Will this mostly be at Center Street, mostly the track?
Yes, yes, be Center Street with visits, visits to North Side.
Any questions?
Did you say that eighty percent is gonna be paid by the school district?
Yes, ma'am. If there are no other questions, is there a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Fairfield and Fairfield Public School District one twelve?
I'll make that motion, I'll second it.
Stahl and Eccleberry.
I have a motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry, to approve the agreement for an S R O at District one twelve, of the school district. Roll call vote Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
McGill is absent, McKibben.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Right, that motion is approved, uh, being no further routine business, we will move into miscellaneous, uh, I've, I've got a couple of, uh, things I would just like to kind of throw out there, uh, for maybe what needs to happen in the future. If you remember, several months ago, we discussed that the state of Illinois was going to repeal the one percent grocery tax, uh, that has happened, uh, but they have pushed the repeal back to January first of twenty-twenty-six, uh, so that will, uh, in their words, give the local municipalities the ability to im- to implement a one percent grocery tax, uh, without, uh, administrative fees, or without needing to go to a referendum. Uh, if you, it, it's very difficult to come up with a dollar amount, but the dollar amount, I will estimate for the one percent sales tax is between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it's gonna go away. You know, not asking for anything here, I guess, if anything, I'm just planting the seed that, you know, that's probably something that we need to discuss, uh, you know, that much of a loss of revenue i- is not good for the city. Um, the other item that I would kind of like to visit a little bit, um, is, um, Wayne County Animal Control. I, I know there's been some, some difficulties, uh, I, I know there's been some discussion, uh, but, you know, what I'm gonna ask today, uh, is that if any of our residents are having any issues, uh, with the Wayne County Humane Society, uh, capturing dogs or cats, I'm gonna ask that you please call the Wayne County Humane Society first, uh, a lot of people call the Fairfield Police Department, and it just gets dispatched. But, for, but for right now, I would like to see that our residents call the Humane Society, and then I'm gonna ask if they do not get the service that they think they need, I'm gonna ask that you call me and let's discuss it, um, you know, a couple of the things about the Humane Society, I ha- I've had a meeting with them. Uh, the first thing is, is, is they don't patrol for animals, uh, I mean, that's, that's not what they wanna do. Uh, you know, we have a contract with them, uh, you know, for their services, I've expressed that I would like, you know, if one of our residents call, that it gets handled, and then maybe it's not, uh, but, you know, sometimes they think that they aren't getting the notifications, but that's why I'm gonna ask, if anybody, and I'll ask that the press help us out here a little bit, if anybody has an issue with a cat, a dog, or anything like that, to please call the Humane Society, and if they can't get satisfaction there, or no, or no answer, or no help, just to give me a call personally, so that I can continue those discussions. The last thing that I would like to talk about, was I've had a few people want to ask about the restrooms at the cemetery, uh, they are currently locked, and they're, and they're locked for a reason, uh, I do not feel that it's our employees at the cemetery's job to clean up soiled underwear, soiled pants, or soiled floors, uh, and so that's the reason I locked it. Uh, I am going to have a discussion, uh, with the cemetery group to see if maybe we can open that for a little while during normal business hours, and that would be seven to four. Uh, again, I know there's a lot of people that walk out there, but again, if you can't use the stool like it's designed to do, I, I will, I will lock those bathrooms and not open them back up, and that's the same way with the uptown, you know, Freedom Park. Uh, we continue to have problems there, you know, whether it's a homeless person, uh, that wants to shower there, or something like that, that's not what it is. Uh, you know, I know a lot of the downtown businesses, you know, state that they don't have public restrooms, that they need to go to Freedom Park. Uh, but, again, I don't think that that falls under the job duties of having to clean up after somebody. Does anybody here wish to talk about anything in miscellaneous?
Well, yeah, I, um, I've had it mentioned to me about the dog walking in the cemetery, and I think it was mentioned maybe about the dogs soiling out there and not being picked up, or the dogs being on a leash, but then being, like, on a very long leash, so that people who are walking by can still have the dog be, get close to them.
Uh, yes, I, I mean, and I've heard the same thing, uh, y- you know, I mean, we have that, you know, if you're walking your dog and your dog needs to go to the restroom on somebody's property other than yours, you know, you're asked to carry a sack with you and pick it up. Uh, y- you know, we have a current ordinance on the books that says dogs and cats will be on leashes. Uh, how long a leash, well, you know, that depends on the property line, um, y- you know.
Well, this is mainly discussing about the cemetery, you know, um, with there being multiple people walking, um, I don't know, we, I just thought I'd mention it, I've had different people bring that to my attention, I didn't know if there was, if it came to it, if there would be no animals allowed walked out there, if they, you know.
Y- the, the animals that I've seen there have been on leashes, um, a- and again, it's one of those double-sided swords, you know, that's gonna cut no matter what we do. Uh, y- y- you know, there are, there are residents that question why we even allow people to walk in the cemetery. Y- y- you know, th- th- that exposes us to some liability, uh, you know, so i- is, is that something that need, y- you know, I don't think people are looking for that, I mean, it's, it's good to walk through the park, it's good to walk through the cemetery, you don't have to worry about walking down Main Street. You know, unfortunately, this weekend, we had a couple of accidents where, where pedestrians were, were walking and, and were hit. Uh, a- again, you know, we hope that, you know, if you wanna walk your dog, you, you try to follow the ordinances that are in place, uh, but we all know that it's just not gonna happen sometimes, uh, but if we, if it needs, you know, if it needs to be addressed, uh, you know, we, we can take a look at it, but, you know.
Um, did you say that the Freedom Park bathrooms are open during business hours?
They are, yes.
Okay. Yeah, but blocked at night, which should be, unfortunately.
Agreed. Anything else under miscellaneous? With that, we have no need for an executive session, I would ask for a mute, a With that, we have no need for an executive session, I would ask for a mute, a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Alderman Eccleberry?
Second.
Second by Alderman McKibben, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.